We did, we did, I confess. That bit, that was a good conversation. Not as singular.
One year.
One. Right. Great, I think we should have, it's happening now. I love it. Thank you. Okay. No way that we got. Right, right. Yeah. That's funny. Which are. Um. Ricky?
Hi there.
Goldie, look at my question. My answer is, I could already have a question. Goldie, my question, like, now, she would always shake his hand. I think. Your mom. Yeah. 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 I love it. I love it. Thank you. Okay. Um. No way that we got. Yeah. Right. Yeah. That's funny. Which are. Um. Hey. And then somebody. What? Um. So. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Ten. Ricky?
Hi there.
Something, maybe. I can see something first time. Since they just go all the way. Oh, I can hear it. Yeah. Come on. It's like work day. Goldie, look at my question. My answer is, I could already have a question. Goldie, my question, like, now, she would always shake his hand. I think. Your mom. Come on. Please. Yeah. 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 What? I don't know. I can't wait two years. I, yeah. I was like, oh, it's not my little. Okay. 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 We'll pull a pass. Good. Okay.
Oh, that's for you. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Let's call to order our Ways and Means meeting for December 6th. Happy holidays to everyone who was able to come and join us at our holiday reception. Thanks for being here. Edmund, if you wouldn't mind.
Commissioner Braybeck.
I am here.
Commissioner Dietrich.
Here.
Commissioner Jamnik.
Here.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Here.
Commissioner Labar.
Here.
Commissioner Martinez-Crats.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Ping. Commissioner Smith.
I am here as well.
Is there anyone here? Thanks, Edmund. Is there anyone here who'd like to address the board? Come on up. When you come up, just let us know your name and. You brought a whole group.
Yes.
That's wonderful.
Hi. Thanks for having us. I'm Sherri Montoy. I'm a 4H program coordinator here in Washtenaw County and want to thank you for your service and thank you for your support of the 4H program and 4H youth show that we have each summer. And these are our 4H ambassadors and I think they want to say a few words.
Fantastic.
Hi, I'm Miranda Montoy. I'm a resident of Chelsea, Michigan, and one of the 4H ambassadors. We're here tonight to learn more about local government and to thank you for supporting 4H and the rest of my ambassadors would like to introduce themselves now.
Hi, I'm April and I'm from Chelsea.
Hi, I'm Raya. I'm from Manchester.
Hi, I'm Bethany and I'm from Stockbridge.
All right, I just want to give you a tiny quick little update about 4H too, since we're here. We have one and a half staff that you support, myself and Kathleen Nagle. She's at home tonight, wasn't able to be here. And countywide, we support over 50 clubs that are all across the county and they're led by hundreds of 4H adult volunteers and so that's all going really well. We coordinate other ongoing programs and some of those you may know about, such as our livestock and horse mentoring projects where the teens work with the younger kids all through the year to teach them about the animals and how to show them. And we have officer and parliamentary procedure training so we can teach them all the things to run meetings and be participants in meetings and that's for youth age nine to 19. The kids are the leaders of their clubs. We have arts and crafts projects a couple times per year. We have other local and state workshops and then we also have many STEM learning opportunities and I think people don't always think of STEM when they think about 4H but all the things we do, animal science, you know, arts and crafts, there's science and math and technology involved in a lot of the things we do. We also got a grant this in the last couple of years for some Lego robotics kits that we purchased and we've been able to use those all across the county. Created a STEM lending library for anybody to use to make it accessible. So like $16,000 worth of materials that we're able to use in the counties. We've worked with some youth at risk, summer camps, some, put on, a teenager put on spring break camp a couple times out in Chelsea and I'm currently using him in after-school program with Ypsilanti through the Bright Futures program, partnership with them. And then one really big, cool, brand new thing I wanted to let you in on the early stages of that's happening is we ended up with a partnership nationally with Microsoft and National 4H and there's only six states doing it that are involved in this and they kind of came to us personally and so it's a really big opportunity. They actually, you know, it all went really fast because big companies move really fast, save a lot of money. And so they said, we want to bring some kids out to Washington State, to our headquarters. So they did that in mid-October, a couple teens from Washtenaw County, from Chelsea actually, one who's been involved in all these Lego things all along. And then they, they had a like, a chance to talk with the kids, take them through some assessments of their communities and needs and the kids, they said, the, your sky's the limit, what do you want to address when you go back home? And try to address the digital divide that's still existing in our area and lots of parts of the US. And so there are six states there and so all these kids were thinking about this and our teens, it always kind of takes their breath away when they said it, but they, they wanted to address teen mental health. We're sitting at Microsoft with these robotics kids and they said teen mental health. So I guess we're here just to also ask you if you have any resources, ideas, connections, ways that you can help us to help them address this. Microsoft's really passionate about having the teens be the leaders of this project. So I'll be working with them over the next year, probably three years to work on that. So we welcome your support and certainly reach out to us anytime at the 4H office.
Thank you. That's really neat. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Chandini. I'm a current student at U of M. I'm a senior in the Ford School of Public Policy and I'm here as an intern for Civ City. So if you don't know about Civ City, it is a nonpartisan nonprofit. Mary Morgan is the executive director and I work with her really closely and it works on civic engagement in Ann Arbor. And so actually, all of you commissioners have received an email from me with a survey and then I really thank those of you who are able to fill it out. And just for the general public who's here and for you as well, what I'm doing is conducting a research project where I send all, I send surveys to the school board, the library board, city council, you, and the three judges of the 15th court. And so far, I've received 23 survey, complete surveys out of 37, which is really, which is great. And then I'm conducting informal interviews. So some of you have shown that interest in that and so I have sent emails or I will be sending emails to you to get in contact. And so far, I've done a couple interviews and then I'm taking research from both looking at local and national and state as well. I am looking into what it means to have a diverse body in terms of government or like elected officials, why it's important, what people's thoughts are on it and what it can actually provide. And so that's what the interviews are getting at, that's what the surveys in part are getting at. And so I welcome you to reach out to me if you are interested in being interviewed and you didn't indicate that on the form. And if you didn't have a chance to fill out the survey, I would love if you could do that. It'll really help. And so in January, I'm going to, with the help of Mary and Civ City, publish a report online that shows my findings. It'll show the demographics but aggregated, so I'm not going to point out particular people. And then I'll weave in different parts from my interviews and my research so then we can hopefully have conversations about this in the general public, within your boards. And I know that already those conversations are starting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens here with us this evening who'd like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move to Commissioner follow-up. Any Commissioner follow-up?
I want to thank the residents of Chelsea that came out. Manchester, Stockbridge, representing the rural community. 4H is very important and I think it's great, builds minds, builds body, builds, it's just a great thing. Community, I guess it would be. Builds minds, builds community and thank you for making the trip out from Chelsea.
Commissioner Dietrich. Thank you to everyone who, who spoke with us and, and I just wanted to mention that the digital divide which you brought up is, yeah, it's a real issue and one that the Board of Commissioners is actually working on. We've established a broadband subcommittee which Commissioner Kent Martinez-Crats and Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Ping and I are on. So thank you for bringing that up and for being here. Commissioner Morgan.
Just want to thank you for being here, speaking on behalf of Civ City. I think that's a great survey. I filled it out and look forward to seeing the results. She isn't listening, but thank you.
Any other commissioners? Okay. Would someone like to move our agenda this evening? Commissioner Labar.
Move the agenda, starting with item 4A1, Office of Community Economic Development. B1A, Emergency Management Performance Grant. C1A, 2018 Survey, Survey and Re-numeration, Remonumentation Program. B, Washtenaw County Solid Waste Management Plan. 2A, Authorization to Hire Coy Vaughan. And that's it.
Is there support for that? Great, the agenda's been moved and supported. Let's go through this. Any questions about the Brownfield Redevelopment Plan? What about for the Emergency Management Performance Grant? The Remonumentation Program? I know we get to see this every year, but. The Solid Waste Management Program. I want to thank again everyone, our Water Resources Commissioners here as well as the Assistant Deputy. Thank you so much, particularly to Megan, for all your work on this. It's a great, really comprehensive, so thank you. Any questions on that? Okay. And then finally, on our agenda, authorizing Coy Vaughan for our Parks and Rec Director. Commissioner Conan Smith.
Thanks. I'm super excited to see this presented to the board. Thank you. And Coy, thank you very much for your willingness to serve. That was really great. And I saw Megan here earlier, she's still here. Megan was our other finalist. You guys, you made that decision super tough for the, the Parks Commission. You guys are both such extraordinary, extraordinary public servants and thank you both for your willingness to look at parks as a place to help us grow and continue this great tradition that we've got.
Yes.
Commissioner Dietrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Jamnik?
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes.
Commissioner Labar?
Yes.
Commissioner Martinez-Crats?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Gender past.
Good evening, Commissioner. Good evening, Commissioners. In, in keeping with our traditions, I would like to offer Coy an opportunity to come up to the podium and, and take a bow before the Commissioners. So Coy, do you want to come up?
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
If all I'll do is take a bow. Just opening my mouth now is just a chance for me to say something wrong and you guys change your minds. So I just want to thank everybody for having the faith in me and appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Congratulations, Coy. But reporter to Chair of Ways and Means, next week, on the 20th, is that next week or a week and a half? I'll be meeting with Admin and Finance to start kind of doing our scaffolding for our four-year budget process. So I'll be in touch with all of you about, I know, as we kind of kick, really start to kick that off. So stay tuned for that. Reporter to Chair.
Thanks, Chair. If you'll recall, in, I think July or August, I can't remember now, you had authorized me as Chair to participate in the RTA negotiations. There'll be a principals' meeting next week, likely on the 13th. Details are still in formation. When I have those details confirmed, I'll be able to share that with you. And as of this point right now, I need to have a final conversation with our two appointees to finalize what we plan to convey at that meeting. You'll recall the resolution lays out that I'm only allowed to negotiate with the agreement of at least one RTA member. So essentially, if the two of them are in agreement on something, that's what we'll be negotiating on. So as more details come available, you will all have them. Thanks, Chair.
Any items for current or future discussion? Okay. Any pending items? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn our last meeting of 2017.
Moved.
Is there support for that? All right, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor? Any opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Just a few minutes. And then I think.
We'll do five minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Thank you. I thought it was maybe my turn. Yeah. 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 Yeah.[1744.16]
Good evening. We will get this Board of Commissioners' meeting to order. And Edwin, sir, if you would please dispense with the roll.
Commissioner Braebeck?
Here.
Commissioner Dietrich?
Here.
Commissioner Jamnik?
Here.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Commissioner Labar?
Here.
Commissioner Martinez-Crats?
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Ping?
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Great. Would you please join me in the pledge?
....................................
Could I get someone to move the meeting minutes from our November 15th meeting? Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. And those opposed say no. We'll move now to citizen participation. This is your opportunity to address us for up to three minutes. Please just state your name and the community you represent to anyone who wishes to address us at this time. Okay. Seeing no citizen participation, we will skip item five, which is Commissioner Follow-up, and move now to item six, Communications. Can I get a motion to file? Could I? Thank you. Great. Motion to file Communications, moved by Commissioner Braebeck, supported by Commissioner Smith. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Okay, move now to liaison reports. Any liaison reports? Okay. Oh, Commissioner Braebeck.
Thank you. Just wanted to make one with the passage of the millage. The CMH Board has been asked to, as part of our language, you'll remember, and our ordinance, as to make suggestions to the Board for membership for the Advisory Council. I know that the Executive Director has been in contact with both the Chair and the Administrator about membership of those, so just so this Board knows, that is in the works, a formal. We have our CMH meeting on Friday, and it will be presented at that Board, and the full, the CMH Board will talk about it, with the hopes of then having a letter to our Board here by our second meeting in January. So just wanted to give folks an update on that.
Thank you. And on our end, hopefully, we can make those appointments either that second week or, if necessity requires, that first week in February, because keep in mind, that Advisory Committee has a May 1st, no, has a May deadline, which we can interpret to be the 31st, to report back to the CMH Board, which then has an August deadline to get back to us, but the August deadline is fixed, I think, because that first meeting is the eighth. So, so thank you, Commissioner Braebeck. Any other liaison reports? We'll move now then to item eight, which is the Special Order of Business, which is a public hearing to receive comment for the amended 2018 through 2020 budgets and the recommended 2021 budget. And I will declare this public hearing open. Anyone who wishes to address us at this public hearing? Seeing no one, I will declare the public hearing closed. And, yeah, if I could get someone to move the whole agenda, but I will have a supplemental that I or someone will need to move as it relates to the CVB budget with the new information. So if anyone's willing to volunteer, I would recognize. Commissioner Braebeck?
Thank you, Chair. So I'd like to move item nine, Reporter of the Chair, item 10, Standing Committees, 11, Special Committees, 12, Other Reports, 13, Reporter of the Treasurer, 14, Appointments, 15, A1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, items from the November 15th meeting, and B, Items 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, from our meeting this evening, and Item C, 1 and 2, and D, Approval of Claims. Oh, and the supplemental. Sorry.
Commissioner Braebeck, are you willing to reference the CVB budget in your, in your agenda moving?
Sure.
Because that has to be done as a separate amendment to the...
Oh, okay. I don't have one.
You...
Thank you. So I'd like to add, the, everyone should have this at their, their place. So we're, so we're amending what we voted on at our last meeting, and this will be replacing it. So, I don't, we, I don't know. Yeah, I saw, they had it over there.
Does everybody have a copy? So the, the agenda has been moved, and this is technically an amendment pending. Right. So there would be, there'd need to be support for the amendment before support for the movement of the agenda? Right. Great. The amendment has been supported. Can I accept that as friendly? Unless there's an objection from anyone. Any objection to accepting that as friendly? Then you're good. Seeing none? So we're back to the full agenda, but let me read in very quickly the food policy appointments, which are Elizabeth Vanderpool for the healthcare seat, Ruth Blackburn for the nutrition seat, Shannon Brines for the rural ag seat, Elizabeth Dahl McGregor for the planning seat, Noelle Bowman for the waste management seat, and Adam Reichenberger for the urban agriculture seat. Is there support for the full agenda? Great. Having been moved and supported, the full agenda as amended, are there any items that individuals wish to take aside for separate consideration? Commissioner Braebeck?
Thank you, Chair. Can we pull 15A6, please? Our budget reaffirmation.
That is pulled. Anything else that individuals would like to pull aside for separate consideration? Commissioner Smith? That's 15C2? Perfect. Okay. Anything else from Commissioners? Then we'll proceed with the full agenda, aside from items 15A6 and 15C2. And I do want to thank Andrew Schmidt from the Board of Public Works for being here. I'm not sure where he's at, but thank you for being here with us, Member Schmidt. We'll proceed then with the agenda minus item 15A6 and 15C2.
Commissioner Braebeck?
Yes.
Commissioner Dietrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Jamnik?
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes.
Commissioner Labar?
Yes.
Commissioner Martinez-Crats?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Agenda, agenda passed.
Great. Let's go then in order to item 15A6, which is the Budget Reaffirmation. Commissioner Braebeck?
Thank you, Chair. You'll recall that a couple weeks ago, I wrote an email and asked for any suggestions that folks might have for any of our budget amendments on the document that we have in front of us. What you have now at your table is just a paper copy of what was sent out on Monday, I think on Monday. And, and so, if folks have any questions, I guess we can do that, but I'd like to move, there are basically four items on this, and I'd like to move all of these to include them in our, where they need to go, in our budget document.
Okay. So this document has been moved in the form of a single amendment with support, so we'll go now to discussion on the amendment. Commissioner Martinez-Crats?
So my, sorry about my late, my voice tonight. My concern is with the first, the executive branch compensation of the fiscal year 18 to 21 budget amendments. I would prefer that this move to what we were kind of talking about, to a compensation committee. I'm not comfortable passing out, or giving out, an 8% raise at this time, or 4% raises. I think some people deserve some raises and some people don't, using my math, which is just my math, and I don't really need to necessarily have a public description about it, but I would prefer us not to pass out raises until we know that they are warranted. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the amendment offered? Commissioner Smith?
I'm sorry. Could we pull the seven-day review section for a separate discussion and vote?
Yeah, what item is it?
It's the...
It's part of that.
It's the third bullet. Sorry.
Okay, well, how can we do that procedurally? Anyone can do it, because first, the, this entire amendment was pulled as a distinct part of the budget, and in turn, it's comprised of separate individual sections. So again, any Commissioner can pull any one of these out for separate vote. Okay. Then we'll pull aside the seven-day review and move to discussion of that after discussion of the remaining items on, on the larger amendment. Commissioner Dietrich?
I just, I have a question about the first item, executive branch compensation. It's really a question about the comment on it. The comment says, "These amendments do two things. One, remove county commissioner salary increases." Yes, got that. Two, require interim increases for countywide elected officials to be affirmatively voted on by the Board." And I may be missing it, but I didn't see where the amendment did that. So, thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, sorry, those are comments that I sent to Felicia, and then after a bunch of discussion, a bunch of stuff got cut out. So, but not the comment. So, yep, sorry. Really, all it does is the Commissioners' salary stuff.
Thanks for clearing it up. It was not clear, Commissioner Smith.
Mostly, people should ignore my comments, because that's the norm at this Board.
I would, I would say the same for myself, yes. Any, any other comments? Commissioner Jamnik?
Thank you. We received this from Commissioner Smith. Is this on the same thing we're talking about now?
I, forgive me, I just cannot see with enough detail.
You can't see? This came to me.
Oh, no, it's, it, forgive me. No, that is different, though related, but not the document we're discussing right now.
So we're not, because I have a question about, the Commission has seven members serving stagger terms for four years. I have some questions I'd like to raise on that.
I think that will come from the floor later. Okay. That, that may be discussed in the future.
Not tonight. Maybe you and I could sit down and talk about it? I have some concerns about that. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Just to respond to Commissioner Jamnik, that's, I would, the Compensation Commission was going to come tonight, just to clarify, but it, we'll talk about it at the next meeting instead, but maybe there's a chance to talk about concerns before then and answer questions, given that we have more time now. So maybe after the meeting or something, we could talk with Commissioner Smith, who led that.
Any other discussion at this point? Commissioner Dietrich?
Okay. I just want to verify, we are still discussing items number one and number two, right? That's, so it's appropriate to discuss the second one at this point?
And if you turn the page, item four.
Right.
Yeah, yes. So...
So I wanted to address the Continued Investments in County Immigration Program, which I am fully and enthusiastically in support of, wish we could do more. My concern is related to the impact on the Department that needs to administer the increase to Barrier Busters, which is our Office of Community and Economic Development. And I don't, I don't mean to put anyone on the spot, but if, if our Director would like to comment on this, I invite her forward, and if she doesn't want to, she doesn't have to, but I, I really want to do this, but we are placing an extra workload, a second year in a row, on a department that I feel is, is stretched, so.
Andrea, if you're willing.
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy to. You all have heard a lot from me in the past two months, between the number of working sessions we've been at, so nothing is, is new to you, and I've, I've shared this in every conversation, we definitely have a budget challenge. That averages out to about $500,000 each year for, over the next five years, before our reserves are exhausted, and that is before any federal budget changes. So we're certainly grateful for any look at additional resources for our community members. Barrier Busters is a critical service. We've demonstrated that time and time again. We're grateful for the focus on our immigrant and refugee populations, absolutely, and at every turn, we will continue to point to the sustainability concern that is, is really important to us. So thank you for the opportunity to do that, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so what we'll do is, if there are any questions for Director Plebick, we can ask him now in order, and then we'll go back to Commissioner Dietrich, who will still have the floor. So any questions? Start with Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Andrea, and thank you for your, your email, giving us a heads up on some of the concerns. I didn't realize that Barrier Busters was, would sort of be impacted by the staff sort of challenge with OCD. So thank you for pointing it out. A question I have, and I just didn't get a chance to talk to you earlier today about this, was, so by putting that funding to Barrier Busters, which I think is really important, I would love to see us do, is there something we should do to offset that workload or that impact on OCD? My understanding in regard to the bigger structural issue of the $500,000 was that we'd talk about it this year and then fix that problem for the next four-year budget, but I could certainly be wrong. That was just my, my impression, is that we would do that.
Let me give both our Administrator and our Director a chance to weigh in on that.
So let me respond by saying, that is the current plan, that we want to, we want to bring something back to you guys during the first quarter of 2018, and we are looking at that as a component of the four-year budget. So you're spot on with that assessment. Also, I think Director Plebick has been clear and very frank with all of us that we still don't know what's going to happen with the federal budget, that has an impact on all of these discussions. So as that information becomes known to us, we will absolutely incorporate that into the discussion, so stay tuned.
Andrea, does that help address that, or are we still putting an undue burden on your Department by increasing that funding?
Well, they're inextricably linked, so we will have a deficit this year. We've done a miraculous job, I will say, and Kelly, you can back me up from my finance staff, whittling that down in each of your quarterly budget reports, we've been able to really minimize that gap. But each year, frankly, since OCD became a Department, we have had a gap. And the projection that I'm talking about is where that gap will take us in terms of the dwindling reserves that we have. So does an increase in, in one area of direct service cause a direct impact on our staff tomorrow? It's not that clearly related, but the, the point I'm trying to make is that is, as we increase the expectation of our service delivery, so too do we need to address the sustainability of our Department, so that we can ensure these services can continue in perpetuity, and frankly, guard against, as you point out, Administrator Dill, the very real and present threat of the federal budget changes. So, you know, and I'll just mention that Barrier Busters is something that the County has sort of organically grown over the years. It started as a very small project of a collaborative that frankly, no longer exists, and it has grown and become a central component of our social service delivery system in this community, and something that I know that our nonprofit sector in particular relies on. And so the County has kind of taken that on in kind in some ways, and, and we've sort of minimized the, the impact of that to our staffing resources, and we had to through the recession. So, you know, again, as we start to see the County's finances improve, it's something that is worth attending to.
Thank you. My concern is just making sure we aren't putting too much additional pressure. My hope is also that we look at significant increased investment in OCD as we look at it this year, and we look at how we're doing economic and development. I'd love to see us put a lot more money into your Department.
Any other questions for Director Plebick? Commissioner Smith?
Not specifically a question. One, for those of you who are curious what this conversation's about, it's been among... One, for those of you who are curious what this conversation's about, it's been amongst leadership and the administrators, so those of us who are not in leadership are not read in on this. It would be helpful if issues like this, that you think are going to arise to the board, got fed to us before the meeting. I would very much appreciate that going forward. If this is a burden on OCD, I would be more than happy to give this funding directly to the Michigan Immigrant Rights Coalition or to WICAR. They volunteered at the very beginning of this, the conceptualization of this project, to manage those funds, and I think that's frankly, a more direct way to get it to the service recipients that we were targeting to begin with. There was a general desire to see Barrier Busters, because of their existing processes, be the recipient for the use of these funds. But if that's too difficult, we certainly have other avenues by which these funds can get into the community, and I'd be more than happy to see that expedited.
Any other, any questions for Director Plebick? Thanks. It's still Commissioner Dietrich's floor there?
Responding Commissioner Smith, I mean, we didn't, although, I mean, I wish I had thought of the, you know, to put more money toward Barrier Busters. We didn't get that. I didn't hear about the proposal until Monday, so I don't think there's actually been a big discussion among leadership about this issue. I gave Andrea a call yesterday when I saw the proposal, because I wanted to think about the impact on the department. I think that's something we all need to do. So, and, you know, I think it's fine that we're thinking about the budget in real time right here. That's part of what these meetings are for. I think it's great. So, I just, and even if, say, we were to take the Barrier Busters funding and give it to an outside agency, it wouldn't solve the problem that, as I said, it has a half-million-dollar budget hole, right? And, I mean, so, I, and we also have the Historic Commission issue, right? That we are, used to have someone part-time, who's, was a full-time person who is part-time staffing the Historic Commission. We don't have a solution for that yet either, right? And that, there's an intern working on that, and I think she is no longer available by the end of the year. So, I guess, I'm hoping that we don't wait till the end of next year to start addressing this, that if the federal budget allows us to address some of this, the funding issues, that we can do something sooner. That's my hope. Thank you.
Administrator?
I just want to remind the board again, we made a commitment that we would have something back to you by the first quarter of 2018, and we intend to honor that commitment. So we will not take all of 2018.
I didn't, I didn't mean administration. I, may I, Chair? Okay. I meant that we, as a board, would take action soon in that, and I apologize. I did not mean that. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on these three amendments? Or this amendment with three parts? Commissioner Jamenik?
Thank you, Chair. You may want me to wait until this is over before I say that. I'm just going to say, right now, I think we need to have a discussion about when we bring these kinds of changes to us, the night of the meeting. This is the first time we see them. We don't have a chance to really sit and think about them. What does it mean? What is it done? Where are we with our budget and stuff like that? We have spent several funds during this past term, and we're not, this past year, and now we're looking at money, and you're asking us to make a decision, where some of you have talked about it with each other, and you understand it. When we come in and we sit down, and we get this at the meeting, it's very difficult to absorb a lot of what we're giving us. Now, I'm not stupid. I have been in government for a long time, and I understand there are times when we're going to get something that is, has to happen fairly quickly. But this, I think it's unfair that you haven't given us more time.
Commissioner Braebeck?
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Jamenik, thanks for your comments. This was the exact thing that went out on Monday night, and then I said, please, let me know if you have any questions. So, yeah, this, yeah, so this one, did go out, to be able to do exactly what you just talked about, to be able to give time for folks to ask questions if they had. I know that sometimes we do have things that come, but this did go out in an effort to be able to do that. Yeah, no problem. No problem.
If I may just continue, Chair.
Sure, please.
I think it's important, because we don't get together outside of here. I think it's really important that when we get things, we have an, and this is my fault for missing that, but we do this a lot. We come in and we change things, and we change them, and the conversation is going on, and quite frankly, sometimes, I have to trust the people that are putting something together that is what we're going to vote for, without really having had any time to think about that. So I would ask us, as we go into next year, we have some consideration for maybe changing that. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the amendment before us with three parts? Let's do a roll call, vote them. If you've got something, now's the time. Commissioner Morgan?
Commissioner Smith, we talked just before this about the, with Kurt, about the seven-day review?
That's been hold.
Oh, oh, yeah, so that'll be the next one. Okay, so we're just on...
So this is just executive branch compensation, continue investments in county immigration program, and increase outside agency funding in line with budget priorities.
Okay.
Commissioner Dietrich?
Well, as one of my favorite Congresswomen sometimes says, I probably shouldn't say this, but, and I know we're talking, I will preface this by saying, I understand I'm talking about non-structural dollars and structural dollars, but in the last item on the second slide, where we're increasing the outside agency funding, and once again, I am enthusiastic support of every single one of these, but we are spending hundreds of thousands of dollars more than was in the original budget, when we have a hole in a department's budget. And I know it's non-structural dollars and structural dollars, but we're talking about the stress on our employees. We're talking about asking them, year after year, to, you know, to do more than they should have to do. And, so, I'm just pointing this out. I'm not proposing anything at this point. Thank you, Chair.
I have a comment, but I want to go to Commissioner Braebeck, too.
Thank you so much, Chair. Commissioner Dietrich, I agree with you, and so as Conan and I talked about this, and so, there's language in there about the county, directing the county administrator to negotiate the contracts, but there wasn't language in there before about having these numbers be caps, and so, and have talked with the administrator about, like, these are, like, this is the high end. You know, like, and preferable would be smaller amounts. And so, I agree with you, and that's why that particular language, because of that concern, got added. So. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'd just follow up on that item to say, I think what Commissioner Dietrich highlights is important to keep in mind, and I said at the last meeting that I was comfortable with the recommendation from the administration. In hearing Commissioner Smith talk about, we did a two-part dance last year. We stated essentially that we were discontinuing the level we had been provided, providing. And then we also stated that we would come forward in 2017 with the Economic Development Strategy. And it wasn't until that was, until I was reminded of that here, and put two into together, we did half that. And so, I think it is good to keep in mind, this is a tremendous amount of money, and in some ways, it's because we couldn't come up with that strategy. But, keep in mind, we couldn't come up with that strategy for myriad reasons, including, one, the village funding question, and, two, the other work we had to do, and, three, the decision to move the four-year budget off one year. So I think this is a good compromise. I'll support it, but I want to recognize what Commissioner Dietrich is talking about in terms of the total dollar significance. Any other, any other comment on it? Commissioner Morgan?
Sorry, this is a comment on the amendments as a whole. I just, I, I don't know if I necessarily want to pull out separate, I can't say that I'm entirely comfortable with the still increase in the salaries for the countywides, rather than those being included in the Compensation Commission. I'm wondering if there's any rational reason that we don't include those salaries in the Compensation Commission as well, rather than sort of arbitrarily increasing them four and eight percent?
Let me speak to that, if I may, Commissioner Morgan. It's my understanding, and I might have to lean on Commissioner Smith and our Corporation Council, that if the county were to go the Compensation Commission route, per statute, that requires the Compensation Commission to look at the salaries of the Board of Commissioners and the countywide elected officials. It also requires the recommendations of that Compensation Commission to be accepted unless opposed by a two-thirds vote. It also requires that that happens in a certain amount of time, I think it's rather constrained, like 45 days from bringing the recommendations forward to the vote. So that would be included, in my understanding, by statute. There's nothing to preclude us from, in the future, if we did a Compensation Commission, to putting a whereas clause, whereas we have for, I don't know, decades, set the compensation level for elected officials, we ask you not to mess with them, or, you know, we ask you to keep that in mind. But if we don't do a Compensation Commission, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kurt, that we have the legal authority and we have past practice of setting these countywide official salaries, so that this would be the norm, rather than a deviation from. Is that generally true?
I think that's generally true. On the Compensation Commission, if you went ahead and approved this tonight, of course, it goes into effect immediately for the countywide electeds. The Compensation Commission, you're exactly right, Commissioner LaBarre, you could put a whereas clause indicating, you know, whereas we've just given a raise to the countywides. But the Compensation Commission still has to look at all the non-judicial elected officials in the county. So that would be this board and the five countywides. You know, I don't know what they would do, but if they were to come back, for example, just as a for instance, if they were to come back with another 10% raise, you could reject that by, as Commissioner LaBarre said, by a two-thirds vote. Otherwise, it would go through. But I don't think there's any way that we can, that you can tell the Compensation Commission, once it's created, that they can't look at certain elected officials. They have to look at them by statute, because it says they shall review the salaries of all the non-judicial elected officials. Hopefully, that made sense.
And a quick procedural question. Because this is still a separate, single amendment with three parts, is it severable?
Sure. You can keep severing down, just as a general rule, if it's easily split. So any commissioner can ask for that. That's why you might remember years ago, commissioners, when we would vote on the full budget, would say, "I vote yes on everything except the funding for Planned Parenthood," or for whatever. So, yeah, I mean, when you've got that many individual parts of the budget, or of amendments like this, these are easily separated out. So you could separate and vote them all separately, if you wanted to.
Commissioner Morgan, still your floor, then. Commissioner Dietrich?
Sorry, I should have noticed this before. This actually isn't an amendment. We already amended the, we already amended last meeting. So this is no change in language from what we changed at the last meeting, right?
Yeah, I think the spirit has not changed, but I do think there was a text change. I guess we can double-check on that.
Okay.
Commissioner Smith, will you jump in and say what you said on the microphone?
We changed the boilerplate, but not the resolution proper. So now, that amendment simply takes what we did last week and applies it to the resolution as well.
Okay. Is that...
And if you'll look in your package, you'll see that those changes had been made in the resolution, since you had voted on it last, at the last meeting. We do incorporate, voted changes in for your review, and there's strike-through in there. So if you look, actually, look at your packet, you should see that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Page two.
Thank you.
Where it is, from the bottom.
Page five.
And then page five.
Be it further resolved.
Second, be it further resolved.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner Morgan?
Nope, I guess I'm good.
Commissioner Dietrich?
From the really helpful salary comparisons that were provided to us by the administration, I was comfortable with these salary increases, but I guess, I don't have a sense of what we're facing in terms of the federal budget, and how bad it could be. And I will put, I have had thoughts about, I'm not proposing it, I just, I've had thoughts about whether we should consider, you know, tabling this, or whatever the right way it is to do procedurally, until, you know, our next meeting. So, I'm just putting that thought out there, because I'm really fearful that we're facing something terrible, and we don't know what it is yet. So, thank you, Chair.
Any other discussion? Edwin, if you would, with the vote, sir.
Commissioner Dietrich?
Pass.
Commissioner Jamenik?
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes.
Commissioner LaBarre?
Yes.
Commissioner Martinez-Crats?
No on the executive branch compensation portion, yes on everything else.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Braebeck?
Yes on everything, except for the Spark allocation. I'm going to abstain on that, because there was a conflict before, and I am just unsure if there is now, per Corporation Council's advice. Thank you.
Commissioner Dietrich?
Yeah, yes on... Yes on everything.
Amendments passed.
Great. We'll move then to the requiring reporting in lieu of seven-day review. Any discussion on that? Commissioner Smith?
So, with your permission, Chair, Commissioner Morgan and I started a conversation about how to tackle this. I made a flawed proposal to amend this. Kurt pointed out that maybe it's not doing what we want it to do, and I don't think we quite figured out what we want it to do. I don't, I think it should be relatively easy to amend, but I can't put my finger on what we, what we, as a board, are looking for here. When we had the seven-day review, it meant that certain set of contracts of a certain level effectively had a quasi-vote of the Board of Commissioners, in that we could have made a vote happen if we wanted to. And what we're doing now is really just, we get, we would get a report on those. But in conversations with the administrator and with Kurt, it all got kind of convoluted. Like, apparently, every contract over $25,000 has a procurement process in place, based on policy that this board has adopted. And so, if we want to change that process, really, the right place to do that is in the procurement policy, not in the budget language. I think that would be the cleaner place to do it. But if we want to be informed about those decisions, this would be an appropriate place to say, put it in our reports. But the question is, what, what decisions do we want to know about, and with what frequency? Because I think, Felicia, you told me that the number of contracts under $150,000 was something like 600 or 700 contracts?
By my reading today on Open Book, on the Internet, it was from start of the year, I believe, through May, 337, or something like that. It's about right. Commissioner Smith, are you...
So, just, Andy, so Open Book doesn't actually report the contracts, it reports payments against contracts. So...
Correct. Sorry, there were 337 of those.
Okay. So I think that's, and that was part of my confusion, too. So I went into Open Book, and I was like, well, but I don't actually, I don't know if this is a monthly, or a weekly, or a, like, we had a leak of a pipe, and it was incidental. So that sort of thing. Greg, do you have a suggestion to how to get this where we need to go?
I do. If the commission would afford us the opportunity to bring...
If the commission would afford us the opportunity to bring something back to you guys at the next meeting, we'll bring back a proposed way to address this particular situation. You know, we've had some internal discussion around this, and, you know, at the end of the day, the seven-day review process has been in place for, I'm not sure how long it's been in place, but...
Longer than I've been here.
Yeah. We didn't get a whole lot of response from commissioners on that particular subject. So the need to modify is something that's driven by you guys. And if you truly desire to have some modification to the current architecture, we will absolutely work to see that that occurs. Don't know that we're going to have a solid answer for you this evening, based on the dialogue that we're talking about right now, so.
So, quickly, the Corporation Council said, if we want to go that route, we'd need a motion to adjourn this item until the first full meeting in January, because we haven't technically set the calendar yet. So that is, that is an option, but I don't want to take anyone's ability to speak on this issue away. Commissioner Morgan?
Excuse me, I think the, I think that sounds like a good plan. I'm hesitant to take that out of the budget reauthorization until we have something in place. And I say this, and I've heard some sound arguments in favor of removing the reporting, the seven-day review. But I see it as a sort of, a safeguard against, sort of as a means of just ensuring some transparency and accountability, and I appreciate that it's in there. I'm just really uncomfortable taking away anything that, to me, seems like a little bit more transparency to the board. I think it's great that we never respond to those emails, Kurt. It's because we don't have any problems or concerns with those things. And I appreciate the time that it takes you to do the seven-day review and send that email to us, but I'm just really uncomfortable with us taking away something like that until we have something in its place.
Let me, let me respond to that, if I may, just to make one subtle point. I do think what you have just stated, Commissioner Morgan, in terms of what you want is absolutely valid. I would say it just a little bit differently, because I don't think it takes away transparency or accountability, but it provides it after the fact. And the only reason I make that point is because I don't want folks at home thinking that if it's not covered under the review, then we can never know about it, rather than know about it beforehand. And so I just want to make that point clear, that any contract we have is public and viewable. And so just to highlight that point. So not to dispute yours, just to add to the richness of the dialogue. Please.
I appreciate that, and I know everything is posted online, but I don't think that's the same as having that, that level before it's done. I think that's more important. But I appreciate what you're saying.
Is the, may I?
Sure.
Is the compromise to leave the seven-day language in place until we bring you back something that, so, why don't we do that?
Can I jump in here?
Sure.
I thought it would stay in place, because it's already in there now. So unless you've taken affirmative action to remove it, wouldn't it still be in? Oh, yes, right, you did, I'm sorry, because I'm thinking of the procurement again. Okay. So, yeah, we could put it back in pending January seventeenth, or whenever the calendar is.
So I think I saw Commissioner Smith, you have his hand up?
Yeah, and I want to apologize to you all for bungling this. I really misunderstood it. But Jason, maybe if we put the seven-day review back in, maybe you and I can go meet with Kurt and purchasing, and really, like, figure out where the right place to get what we need is, and make sure that we bring that back.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes, I apologize as well. I thought there was, I thought this language would fix it and sort of address your concern and our concern at the same time, and I apologize as well that it didn't exactly work that way. That was my hope as well. So, yes, I'd be happy to work with Commissioner Smith and you all and figure that out, to find a way that's easier for you, but still, at least, in my opinion, sort of alleviates my comfort around this. So I apologize as well. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Let's go Commissioner Braebeck, then Commissioner Smith.
So Kurt, can I withdraw my motion for this part, since it got pulled? What do we need to do?
Well, we haven't voted on it yet. I mean, it got pulled, so we're talking about it separately. So what is it?
It got moved, right?
How about we table it?
You can definitely.
Oh.
You can do that, too.
Can we do that? I move to table it indefinitely.
Support.
Okay. The amendment's been moved to table indefinitely and has been supported. Is there discussion allowed aside from procedural question, Kurt?
I will look that up. We haven't done this in a long time. I want to say there is.
If it's a procedural question, please.
Do we have to take action to put the seven-day review back in there since we passed last time taking it out?
Yes.
I believe the answer is yes, because we've formally taken the action tonight to make that necessary.
Okay, so should we just amend that language then, Felicia?
Well, I think we need to table it first, because we did, right? And then we can put it back in.
You've tabled it indefinitely, and so there is debate on it, by the way.
But just the, this language, we could say, we'd like to...
And when we get to the main event, we can fix it.
You know what I mean?
Okay, yeah, you could do that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Does Commissioner Morgan understand what you're doing on that?
Does that make sense?
I'm not sure Commissioner LeBarre does.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't either, and now I do.
Okay. So we can table...
The language.
The, this. Right? We can table this, and then we can input, reinsert the original seven-day language into the budget.
In the budget resolution itself.
Perfect.
So what's pending is the indefinite.
So there's a motion to table indefinitely that is pending. Any discussion on that?
New voice.
Okay. Yeah, seeing none, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Okay. So now, we've tabled indefinitely. Someone could offer a motion to reinsert the language. Would such a motion be offered?
Yes, I would.
Commissioner Morgan?
I would move to, I don't know how to say this, add back the seven-day review policy?
Restore seven-day review.
Restore seven-day review.
Having been moved, is there support?
Support.
Okay, any discussion on it? Okay. Do you have a voice vote? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no? Okay. Then we are back to the item, which was fifteen A six. So it's been amended with those three additional items, and there was exciting legislative action that did not change it on that fourth item. Any discussion on the overall resolution, fifteen A six? The budget reaffirmation. Commissioner Dietrich?
Yes, I would like to discuss it and then probably offer a motion to amend. This is on page twenty of the budget. Give you a chance to get there, number fifteen. So page one seventeen of your packet. And as background to this, there had been, there's been ongoing discussion in Parks and Rec about establishing an endowment fund to fund the natural area protection program, and specifically, the properties of which we gained, we bought the development rights for, both natural areas and farmland, and also those that we bought outright, which is an interesting and important idea, one I am still personally considering. There was a vote by the Parks Commission, Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Jefferson can correct me if I'm incorrect, wrong about this, but there was a vote to go ahead and establish that endowment fund. And as you may know, it's been in the press today, and also, I've heard both internally in the county and from external organizations, that they are, there's an expectation that the issue of whether there should be an endowment fund established should come to the Board of Commissioners. And there's some confusion about whether this language would allow the Parks and Rec Commission to go ahead and just make that decision without it being referred to us. So I was going to offer an amendment that would just clarify that that decision would need to come to us. We're talking about, I think it was a fourteen or fifteen million dollar total amount of money. And so I'm offering to add to the end of number fifteen, after the word expenditures, with the exception of expenditures for the purpose of establishing or funding any permanent or temporary endowment or investment fund, colon, such expenditures must be approved by the Board of Commissioners.
Okay. Having been made, is there support for the motion?
Support.
Okay. Have been moved and supported? Any discussion on the item? Go Commissioner Braebeck, then Smith?
I guess I was just wanting to be able to hear from our Parks Commissioners about this. I know we've had a working, we've only had, I mean, the most I know about this is one working session. And so I'd really like to hear from you all about, more about this. If there's more to know.
By you all, you mean Commissioners Jefferson and Smith?
Yes, yeah, thank you.
I want to make that available. I know other folks have questions. Commissioners Jefferson and Smith, would either of you or both of you care to provide comment in that role at this, at this time? And if not, I can come back to you as well. Parks Commissioner Smith?
So we have had conversations at the board about creating an endowment fund at the direction of this Board of Commissioners. So, yes, the amount and timeline and structure of that, like, we have not delved into at this point. I actually had a question for Kurt as to whether, I think, creating that probably requires board action.
Yeah, that was my position as well. Because what you did back in the day after the original Natural Areas Millage was passed is that the original version of the ordinance, it's still in there, basically gave the operation of the program to the Parks and Rec Commission. And so they oversee the day-to-day operations. By law, they can purchase land in the name of the county. It's not a separate legal entity in that sense, because they buy it in the name of Washtenaw County. My view on this would be, if I understand it correctly, if they were setting up an endowment or something of that nature, that that's really not day-to-day operations. That's something that's new and would probably have to come back to this board anyways. And I think you said, when you discussed it with the Parks and Rec Commission, that was discussed as well?
I think so. And I would add in to, well, I had another question in relation to this, which I think might be more for Kelly. Is NAP considered a special fund, not the Parks and Rec's budget?
Special revenue fund, but it's categorized with under Parks and Rec.
But is the NAP fund balance part of the Parks and Rec fund balance?
It has its own fund balance.
Right. So I think, like, just technically, Michelle, you want a new line that speaks specifically to the NAP fund balance, not to the Parks and Rec fund balance.
Okay, so just...
Let me, so Commissioner Smith, are you done responding for your perch as a Parks Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay. I have you, Commissioner Smith, to speak. Okay, you're good, then go to Commissioner Dietrich.
Okay. I'm happy to make that amendment, but I thought I'd wait until we had word that that was the right way to go about this. And I'll just say, part of the reason I took the concerns that were brought to me, you know, seriously, is that I understood that there were monies already being set aside, not in an investment fund, but being set aside internally for this purpose, without the board yet having weighed in on that. But maybe that's wrong. And I'm not sure that what I'm doing would address that issue anyway, so, I'm, thank you, Chair.
Answer that.
Commissioner Smith?
So, sort of, yes. So we have not spent some NAP money. So it's set aside in anticipation of fulfilling the directive from the Board of Commissioners, but the action to create the actual fund and the investment strategy and things like that have not been measured. So it's really just that we have chosen not to take affirmative action with those funds for some other project.
Commissioner Dietrich?
So, you know, what has been expressed to me, and I do not serve on the NAP, the Natural Area Protection Program Committee, so I'm just reporting what's been said to me, is that there are actually land development purchases that have not happened, that have been passed up because money was being set aside. Now, that, I do not believe has happened yet, although I think it will soon, on the committee I do serve on, which is the ALPAC, the agricultural land. But we are being told funds are running out because it's being set aside for the endowment. So is that, is that right? That's, that we're actually, we're actually already passing up? So sort of a, a policy change has been implemented. Thank you, Chair.
So, not, so we're sitting in this gray space. So there has been no policy to say we are going to limit the number of properties that we purchase or anything like that. The policy change that we have made over the past year is to adopt a prioritization process, which is much more rigorous, or, as you know, around quality farmlands and quality natural areas. And so we've been targeting our funds, just like ALPAC, at those higher-quality, more sensitive, more jeopardized pieces of property. So it's been easier, I think, for those high-quality pieces to get through the process. Those that aren't in that top-tier threshold have sort of been like, well, maybe we'll take a pass on this, because there might be better uses for those funds later. But there has not been a policy statement by the Parks Commission to say, set aside something for an endowment or preservation. It's been a much more loose conversation at this point.
You know, I'll come back to you, Commissioner Dietrich. I'd comment to say, I appreciate the intent, and I don't think it's a bad thing to put it on there. I don't think the Parks and Rec Commission would do it without approval, but this way we're all covered, and we can always point to it together. So I'd be in support of whatever change needs to be made, just so it's spelled out. Commissioner Dietrich?
Yeah, I appreciate that, especially given the comment, the questions are coming from the public and from some of our allies. I think it will clarify things for them. So I would welcome Commissioner Smith's adding the right language. If we, I'm sorry, do we, I'm going to ask, do we need to add the language about the special fund?
Yeah, this is already a special, the natural area is already a special revenue fund. If you want the endowment to be identified independently, its own fund away from the other natural area millage, we can do that. But I don't think it's necessary.
Michelle, I thought...
Commissioner Smith?
I'm sorry, thank you, Andy. I think your language is fine. I would just, instead of putting it, instead of tagging it onto the Parks fund balance, I would create a new line that just says, "The Natural Area Preservation Program Fund Balance shall..." or whatever your language was.
Okay. That's, I accept that as a friendly amendment.
Is there any objection?
Any objection?
No, I can't. I have to.
It's accepted as a friendly amendment?
So is it going as a separate line item?
Let me ask clarification.
Or fifteen A. Fifteen A.
We'll give Edwin a minute to read it, and then he'll read it aloud.
So it's a, it starts in your second, it's a part of regulation, it shows expenditures.
Well, so I guess what you're, what you're trying to say is that the NAP, shall not be generated by the Board of Commissioners. That's basically what I would say, fifteen A. Natural Area Preservation Program Funds shall not be generated.
I want to, like, withdraw that language. Can I do that? Or just...
Commissioner Dietrich, I'll give you the floor.
So I'm not, I'm going to propose different language, and as long as, if I understand correctly, as long as there's no objection, that can... correctly, as long as there's no objection, that can stand.
That's correct, because there's, yeah. It's a, we need to ask if there's any objection to her withdrawing the original language.
I'm, I'm sorry, withdrawing the original amendment.
Folks, any objection? I see none.
The Parks and Recreation Commission's Natural Area Protection Program funding shall not be used to establish a permanent or a temporary endowment or investment fund without approval by the Board of Commissioners.
So before that's made, do you want that as a new number sixteen or fifteen A? What's the...
I think fifteen A is just going to make this document more readable.
Okay.
But I don't...
So that's been a motion made. Is there support?
No, 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 it's fifteen, then you have fifteen A.
Okay, having been moved and supported, any discussion on that, on that amendment? Commissioner Smith?
So, I appreciate the sentiment and the concerns of the citizenry. I'll remind the Board, however, that we took proactive action to amend the NAP ordinance specifically to enable the creation of an endowment. And the reason for this is this. We have bought an enormous amount of property. And should, right now, we have to maintain that property in an ongoing basis. And because these are sensitive natural areas, they demand specialized attention. We protect them from invasive species, for example. And should the next round of millage for this program fail, we will be left without any funding for maintenance and preservation of those properties that we already own. And the only way that we would be empowered to find that money is maybe to go back to the voters for additional millage, maybe draw it from the County General Fund, because it's not a purpose of Parks and Recreation. So the intent behind creating the endowment is to ensure that we have funds available to maintain the properties that we already own, just like we do or should be doing with the rest of our infrastructure across the county. I understand the consternation. I think there is completely, complete legitimate debate about the amount that should be put aside and the timeline on which that should be established. Those are conversations that need to happen, and I do think, I agree that those are conversations that should engage the Board of Commissioners, because NAP is our program, it is not the Parks Commission's program. But I'm hesitant to restrict them from taking temporary action on an assignment that we've already given them. So I would appreciate the, maybe the removal of the temporary side of that. So, because we have, the, here's what I worry about with regards to that temporary language. We have told the Parks Commission that they are enabled and empowered to expend as much as they feel is necessary on the maintenance of these properties. We used to limit that amount to a very small amount, and then a slightly larger amount, and then we finally removed that restriction. I don't want to create any confusion about that role of maintenance. And whether that is a shorter, long-term role, I think we can and should talk more about. I would say, as long as those funds are not permanently restricted in an endowment, where we couldn't touch them, because once they're in there, by law, they're in there, right? And we can't go mess with that principle. But if we're just hanging on to them in the fund balance and, like, setting them aside for a maybe use time, I think that's okay. And that's actually the appropriate degree of policy decision-making that we delegate to the Parks Commission proper. If they want to make permanent decisions about those monies, then I think definitely they got to come back to us. So it's the, it's the "and" temporary part of this that has me feeling a little concerned. So if I have the language right, is it "or" temporary?
Edwin, would you read the language again?
I may need it one more time. I think I have, NAP finding. Thank you, sir. So what I think I have, Commissioner Dietrich, NAP funding shall not be used to establish a permanent or temporary endowment fund without approval of the Board of Commissioners. That's what I have.
Is it, is it, say, maybe I misheard then, it's specifically temporary endowment fund?
I have permanent or temporary endowment fund.
Is that, that's the exact language? Okay. Yeah, that, that makes me a little more comfortable, because I think what's happening right now in Parks and NAPs is we're just not spending the money. So, so it's just sitting there banking up, which I don't think we would consider a temporary endowment, we would just consider it fund balance available at any time.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Morgan?
I was, I was just going to say, I think the temporary endowment part makes me comfortable leaving that in there, because I think it seems very specific to endowment. I think the concern, Commissioner Smith, from folks that I've heard, is the fact that we have money, we're not spending it, because they would prefer that we're buying land with it, which is, seems to be what its purpose is. I think that's the concern that, yeah, preservation, that's the concern that I've heard. I don't know exactly how I feel personally yet, in terms of whether an endowment makes sense or not, but I would be comfortable, I do think that decision absolutely should come back to us as Commissioners, and I would be comfortable with this language.
Yeah, I would too, just because, and I could be dead wrong, I think of an endowment as a dedicated fund, I think of the rest as temporarily unused fund balance, or funding within a certain fund. I mean, Commissioner Smith makes a really good point, which is, we've, we have authorization to purchase this land, but that does us no good if we, in fact, then don't have the money to maintain it. You could, you could make an esoteric argument that to do, to not maintain it is actually to violate the spirit of the authorization. I think this language that Commissioner Dietrich has, Dietrich has proposed will work to satisfy the dual needs, so I'd be supportive, but I don't want Commissioner Smith's comments to be lost. I think they're well said. Any other discussion? Commissioner Dietrich?
And I want to clarify, I'm not opposed to an endowment fund. I think it really does both the decision to establish one, and, as Commissioner Smith has rightly pointed out, the amount, the timetable really need to be considered. And I hope sooner rather than later, because we were presented originally back in September, and I think we're not hearing again anything about it till February. Meanwhile, there are, in fact, land purchases, which I understand are not being made, and some of those, sometimes those opportunities go away if we don't purchase them. So I think it would be better if we can move forward in this. And I also want to point out, you know, the issue of an endowment fund, there, I think, are other entities within the county where we could make the same argument, that if we don't establish an endowment fund, there won't be money to continue that particular infrastructure. We could make that for all of our parks, not just NAP, right? So I think that we are, if we make the decision to allow this, we are making a decision that may have repercussions, good, bad, and different, just we need to consider them fully. So, thank you.
Any other discussion at this time? Okay. Edwin, if you would, with a roll, please, sir.
Commissioner Jamnik?
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes.
Commissioner Labar?
Yes.
Commissioner Martinez-Crats?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Brabec?
Yes.
Commissioner Dietrich?
Yes.
Adam passed.
Great. Back to discussion of the full fifteen A six budget reaffirmation. Any further comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes.
Commissioner Labar?
Yes.
Commissioner Martinez-Crats?
No.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Brabec?
Yes.
Commissioner Dietrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Jamnik?
Yes.
Adam passed.
Okay. Great. We'll move then to item fifteen C two, which is the BOC liaison position. I would open it up for discussion. Commissioner Smith?
So I appreciate the amount of time and work that has gone into this. I'm a little frustrated that it's come to us in this format and without substantial notice and discussion amongst the rest of the Commissioners. This position is supposed to be one that works for the entirety of the Board. And so without our full engagement in the crafting of this, this description as it's evolving, I don't, I don't feel represented in that process as one Commissioner. Second, I note that a substantial number of the duties that are programmed for this job now are unrelated to those that were in the initial job description, in fact, things that we actively took out of the original job description. And I see a whole lot of things in here that are driving this position to be responsive to individual Commissioners' needs, rather than the needs as articulated by the Board of Commissioners. I don't feel like this structure is in the spirit of that position, and I understand that I may be in the minority on that, but because of that, I'm not going to be supporting this as it's been presented this evening.
Commissioner Martinez?
No, I'm sorry, I was looking for it under the blue packet, and I found it now. So it'll, I'll just read as other people comment. Thank you.
Other, other discussion on this resolution? Commissioner Morgan?
I have one amendment that I had spoken with a couple of Commissioners about, just a slight addition. This is something that I believe was suggested during the interview process, and that was the idea that the Board Liaison would create a sort of coordinated, a shared calendar, basically a calendar of events that are relevant to Commissioners, sort of community events calendar. And so I would love to see us include that in a work plan. And I spoke with a couple of Commissioners, and others seemed to be supportive. I don't know if there are thoughts on that. Basically, the idea is, like, keep a calendar of community events that'd be relevant to us, that we could, like, countywide, that we would be able to go to when we want to. But I think that would be really helpful to all of us as Commissioners, to know more about what's going on in the communities, so we can decide where we should be at and spending our time. So I guess I will make a formal motion to add under item, let's see, I guess, under number ten, maybe. I think that seems like where it might fit best. A new item that says, work with appropriate staff to develop and maintain shared calendar of community events.
Okay. Having been moved, is there support?
Haven't.
Okay, having been moved and supported, is there discussion? I have a quick bit of discussion. Commissioner Morgan, you said under item ten, you wanted that?
I don't really care where it goes. It just seemed like it would be a weird thing to put at the very end.
Okay. So, but not in place of ten as an addendum?
Yeah, an addition, yeah.
Commissioner Dietrich?
I really support this. I think it would be great, we all receive a lot of invitation.
We might decide that we want to make sure that there is a Commissioner to represent us at a particular event, and it would allow us a coordinating mechanism. So I'm fully in support of this.
I ask this not to prolong debate, do we want to put any governing device there on something if it's of a political nature? Maybe it's, maybe it's as simple as putting in appropriate items or something like that. I would, I would, if somebody could move that, it could be accepted as a friend of them? Can I, I'll move it.
Knowing the facts.
Any objection?
How, what language would you want on there?
To add the word appropriate in the appropriate spot, which of course requires us to have the language again. Can you, can you read it one more time, Jason? I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. Work with appro, work with appropriate staff to develop and maintain shared calendar of community events.
Appropriate community events.
So work with appropriate staff to develop and maintain shared calendar of appropriate community events.
Yeah, and I don't mean to make light of it, I simply mean that if there's a partisan fundraiser that we all want to know about, it's entirely appropriate to know about as individuals, it's not with somebody at ewashtenaw.org website, or email address. Any, any objection to that amendment?
That's fine.
Great, that's accepted. Onto discussion of the existing amendment? Okay. We'll do it by voice vote, then? All those in favor say aye. Aye? Those opposed say no?
Okay.
Okay. Back to the underlying...
In the opinion the Chair, the ayes have it.
Back to the underlying resolution. Commissioner Brabec?
Thank you, Chair. The, for me, one of the reasons that we created this position was to be able to have someone who, a dedicated staff person who we could work with, particularly on projects, that we need assistance with, that are, because we're part-time, having someone here who's full-time, they could help do some bridging for us and really kind of do a deep dive into things. I have a concern about all of the day-to-day operational, the big list, I think there are twenty-some items that are on there. I think those are all things that need to be done and are important. I just worry about the, the individual's ability to be able to do all those when the focus, I think, should be projects. I know that there's language in there at the beginning about time and priority on Commissioners' projects. I just, I just want to make, I just want to make a statement about that, that I have some concerns. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Dietrich?
I just want to echo Commissioner Brabec's concerns, that the point, the reason, at least, that I supported the creation of this position was to support our work, and specifically projects, as well as a few other things, such as the community calendar, that would allow us to serve the public better. And I am concerned that there's just an awful lot here. I, you know, I look at number twenty-two, maintain inventory of BOC snacks and beverages, that wasn't what I had in mind. I'm willing to, you know, support this if the rest of the Board feels differently, but, and I may be being too detail-oriented here, but when I look at number six, when necessary, hire, train, and manage interns, I just, I hope it's clear in context that that is interns who will support the work of the Board of Commissioners and the BOC liaison, not a wider internship program, because we do have other interns in the office. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Thank you, Chair. The list is long and it's quite lengthy, but I don't know why. I mean, some of these, I think, duties or whatever you desire to call them as is job description, things to do, are some of these things able, be able to be, I guess, shared. I mean, we have, in this year, we've hired two staff members for our administration office, our administrator's office. And some of the things that I see on here are things that I know have been already taken care of before the two were here. And so that appears to me that some of these are added duties for the liaison that come from another staff member's job description. So I'm just wondering if we could have some type of document for the job description, because we did change even the title of one of the staff members, which changed duties also. So I'm not sure if, if all of the things that are here listed can be shared with someone else, because if they can be shared, they should be shared, because they were being taken care of before we even got this position. And it's more of administrative duties more so than assisting the Board.
Administrator?
Yeah, yeah. So I will respond to that by saying, all of the duties in the administrator's office are shared, including the duties of the BOC liaison. That individual will hopefully take vacation, that individual will be out of the office on occasion, and there's an expectation on, from my chair, that everyone in the office will not only assist with the duties of the of the BOC liaison, but anything relative to the day-to-day operation of the organization. When those duties come in, we triage the duties and we make certain that those things happen. So to your point, uh, those duties are inclusive of everyone in the office's position description, including Diane Height and myself. Uh, if phones need to be answered, we're not above answering telephones, et cetera. So I just caution the board, I don't want to create a, a, a work plan that's so rigid that the BOC liaison can't be successful as well. So I, I just want you guys to, to be conscious of that as you continue this discussion. Uh, our goal is to make sure that Desmond is, is as successful as possible, so.
Commissioner Jefferson?
So if he's given an assignment that is within, uh, these, I guess, 26 duties, and he has to have help, he can ask for that help from someone else in the staff?
Absolutely. Not just in the administrator's office, but in this entire building. Uh, that is the environment and the culture that we have created and tried to foster in, in this building, so absolutely.
Um, I'll get to other folks, uh, but before I do, I just want to say a quick, couple things. Uh, this position was created actually in 2013, in theory, in the, in the four-year budget, and for a number of reasons, I think, some of which we see here tonight, it, it wasn't acted upon for several years. When we did the description, we passed a resolution, and when we brought an attempt to, to change this a bit and, and provide further detail at the last meeting, uh, there was some pushback from the board. So the Friday following that meeting, I met with Administrator Dill, Deputy Administrator Height, uh, our analyst, Lisa Matino, and Mr., uh, Mr. Miller, to get a general sense of what they thought they were hearing from the board and, and what they were seeing in terms of day-to-day function in the office, to provide further detail on what this, this person would do. Uh, that document was returned to me the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. That day, I gave feedback to the staff and asked them to prepare it for the leadership meeting that was coming up the Monday after Thanksgiving. At the leadership meeting, that document was presented. Uh, I asked for other members of leadership to get any feedback by close of business on Wednesday. Uh, they did that, and this document was then, uh, those, that feedback was given to staff to turn into a compiled document to get out to the board as soon as possible. That took until, I think, Monday, um, and, and with good reason. If there's any worry about this document, either in terms of process or content, let's either say it now, or let's, let's bump it to January 17th, but please, let's get, let's get something we can all agree on, because inevitably what has happened and what will happen again is, there'll be nine different interpretations at this board table of what this person is doing and what their appropriate roles are, and then we'll have the, the practical interpretation of the administrator and other staff. And I, I am in no way, shape, or form trying to lecture anybody, I'm just trying to say, eventually, uh, the chair, going forward, is going to have to, to some degree, be asked to, to, to referee some of this, as is the administrator. I just want him to have a single document that we've all at least debated to be able to point to. So if there's discomfort with this, I have no pride of authorship. The only thing I want is something we can all sign onto and say, "We'll agree that this position will adhere to these guidelines," because it's sort of like Kurt and sort of like Greg, the liaison works for all of us. So if we pass a resolution saying, "Do this tomorrow," that person's going to do that tomorrow. If we say, "Within the next six months, prioritize these things as you see fit," they're going to do that. So, um, if, if, if there's any worry, uh, let's hold off. If not, let's, let's proceed and just agree, uh, to move forward. So I, I interrupted debate there. Uh, I saw Commissioner Jamnik's hand up.
I agree with you, Chair. I think we have a document to begin with. I would hope that within two to three months, we would sit down and talk with this young man and say, "How's it going? Where's the problem?" Because he's not going to be asked to do all of these things every day, but, and I will have to say, when I looked at number 28, 26, I thought, "Wow, that's a lot of things." But he's not going to do them every day, and I think we have a young man who's intelligent enough who will come and say to us, "This isn't working very well," or "Could we adjust it? Could we amend it? Could we protect, you know, make changes to it as we go forward?" So I would ask us to go ahead and pass this with the understanding that we'll come back and review it within, by the end of March of next year. That gives him three full months to really take a look at it and see how it's going. Thank you.
Do you want to add a quarterly review clause in there or something?
No. That's not my intention. My intention is, is to realize that this is not, he's not going to do all of this every day.
Gotcha.
Or every week. And if, in his doing the job, he finds out that some of these things don't work, can we move them to some other department or handle it in another way? But, uh, he's a nice young man, and he's clearly wants to do a good job for us, so I think we need to be able to accept when he steps up and says, you know, that this isn't working quite well, is there, and, and come to us with a solution of where else it could be done or handled.
Uh, we'll go to Commissioner Dietrich, and then our administrator. Want to say something?
Just wanted to respond by saying two things. One, I think the jury's still out on whether he's a nice young man. And then, and then two, uh, and then two, you, you deserve, you, you, you have the right to modify this at any point in time. If you, if you truly feel that something isn't working the way that you designed it, we can absolutely make an adjustment at any time. Uh, he is not shy about telling us, uh, you know, his opinion on what's going on to this point. I don't anticipate, uh, that changing at any time. So we will modify this. If there's ever a time when you feel like something's not working the way that it should, uh, we'll just make an adjustment. Uh, his position description is no different than any other position description that we currently, uh, use in the administrator's office, so, uh, and in fact, uh, with some of those position descriptions, there's a clause that says, "Other duties as assigned," and that is the catch-all for everything else. So I, I just want to caution you guys not to be too rigid with this. We can certainly modify it at any time.
Yeah. Uh, Commissioner Dietrich?
So, I want to sum up what I'm hearing from everyone. I'm hearing concerns about the overall workload. I'm hearing concerns that, um, some of this is more clerical in nature and not in the nature of the job that many of us, including me, thought we were, uh, authorizing, um, that it's not. And, um, and then I'm also hearing concerns that if we, uh, were to say pare this down too much, that it would leave the administrator's office with a lack of flexibility that's needed. So I'm going to offer an idea for discussion. Um, I'm not invested in this, I'm just trying to, trying to address problems. So what if we, you know, took, for example, numbers nine and then number 18 through 26, and said, "Those items, which to me seem to be more of that clerical, sort of not the things we were thinking of, are to be done on an as-needed basis when the primary staff responsible cannot perform them." That's one idea. The other idea is that we go ahead and, you know, I look at this, and this is a position that's going to need a support person. Um, I think we've only authorized one extra staff person for the administrator's office this year, is that correct? Not two? Right. And we, we're going to come back and revisit that. So that's another possible way of addressing this, either looking at, not tonight, but eventually looking at a staff person to support, um, the BOC liaison, or get another, you know, clerical staff person, a general person for the administrator's office, which is something, you know, I think we should consider. So, just offering ideas for discussion. Thank you, Chair.
Uh, any other, uh, discussion at this time? Uh, Commissioner Smith?
Um, I think we should change the title of this to reflect that this is really the board secretary, um, because those are the duties that are going to end up being assigned to it on a bi-weekly basis. Uh, and just recognize that, like, we have administrative needs. Apparently, like, administration has suggested that the bulk of the, the time that's spent by this position, position should be on those things. Either we have big projects that we want differential professional attention to, or, or we need administrative clerical support. Uh, but to try and task one person with all of that is not, uh, phew, I would never have applied for that job. Uh, I'd be surprised to learn if any of the applicants for this job would have applied for this job if that, if they knew that was the case. And, uh, again, I, I'm going to vote no on this, and I hope that we, at some point, acknowledge that we have more substantive important challenges that got to get addressed by some staff support than, um, making sure our agendas are set.
Other discussion? Commissioner Brabeck?
I have a question, Kurt. The language under the, in the memo that talks about time spent and that the focus will be on commissioners' projects, and that other duties will follow that priority, I, I'm on, like, the first bullet on the memo, paragraph?
Oh.
Does that provide enough direction about the, the focus on the projects rather than all those day-to-day operational things that, again, are, are needed, but I don't want them to overtake? I have concerns about them overtaking Desmond's time.
Yeah, I mean, certainly that is some direction that you can look at, some, um, guidance that I think really administration would look at.
Okay.
Because they're, they're looking at it on a day-to-day basis.
Right.
The board isn't there. So this is a, a cover memo, so it's not binding, but it certainly, cover memos are important because they can express the will of the board.
Okay.
And so, um, I think that's fine. I think, I think your point's well-taken, because the language does say that the majority of it will focus on commissioner product, projects, with other duties following that priority.
Mm-hmm.
So depending on how many commissioner projects have been assigned to this person at any one time, would probably dictate how much time he would have left to do the 26 other things that are listed there.
Right. So the, the, thank you. Um, I have a question for you, Greg. Chair, is that okay if I address the administrator directly? The, and I'm sorry that I didn't ask this before, the, the things that are on that list, expressing, are they on other folks' work plans as well? Or is this the only person who has those things on their work plan?
I would have to go back and look at the detail around those work plans. Uh, it is an assumption on my part that whatever things that are, whatever things are required for the day-to-day operation of that office, wherever they need to happen, whatever resources that we have to apply to them, that it happens. So I'd have to look to get to some specific details around what's, what's included in those individual work plans. Uh, I, I just don't have them in front of me right now.
Greg?
Okay. Thank you.
Sure, go ahead.
I was just going to, uh, add on to that, that as the administrator had said just a couple of minutes ago, for a lot of the work plans, they may not go into that great, great a level of detail, but they have the catch-all at the end. So the catch-all will say, "And any other duty as assigned."
As assigned, definitely.
So that could be 900 things, right? Uh, it just doesn't spell it out that, that precisely.
Do you, Kurt, do you think that it, it would behoove us to, to put something like that language into the resolution? So it's really clear?
I mean, it's really up to the board how they want to do it. Again, um, I think, just looking at this, I think we have, or administration has a good idea what you're looking for from this individual, and it's administration that's going to be overseeing the day-to-day operations.
Right, yeah.
I guess what, what it seems to me is that you've got a nice, I mean, a big start here.
Yeah.
Uh, and as Greg said a few minutes ago, this can be tweaked, shortened, tailored. I mean, you may look at this in three months and say, "He's never done eight, 12, 15, and 27." Maybe those don't need to be in, and maybe they can then, you can figure out how many of those there are, and then replace it with that catch-all that says, "And any other as assigned, any other item."
Okay.
But at this point, you're almost guessing, because he hasn't been here long enough to really...
Be able to do it, sure, sure.
To really have a good feel for what it is he's doing exactly day-to-day.
Thanks.
Uh, Commissioner Jamnik?
I've probably talked more tonight than I have since I've been here. I want to take you all to the last paragraph. This is what it says. "As we all know, no two days are alike in administration. This document is intended to provide a structure and should not be considered all-inclusive of the duties of Mr. Miller may perform. Administration and Mr. Miller remain committed to provide the Board of Commissioners with the tools and the information needed to deliver world-class service to our residents." And just for exclamation point, if he could work for the Dingels, he can easily work for us.
Well, knowing some former Dingle alum, you know, they're not always the sharpest tools in the shed, but that's all right. Um, I, I would, I guess I'd just make this point. Um, I'm looking at the original resolution we passed in May, and there are parts in there that say, "Project management," but there's also parts that say, "Government relations and community relations." Um, I think Commissioner Smith made a really good point in terms of titles, the, and I don't have pushback on that, I would just say this. I have heard different descriptions from folks on this board about this position doing different things. Some things that I would consider as secretarial or administrative, some things as facilitating, some things as genuine liaison work, touching base with certain groups and so forth, and some things as broad strategic in terms of plans. I, there's not a right or wrong answer to that. I just want a common answer. Uh, that's all I would ask. So I'd say, if, if we're comfortable with this tonight, fantastic. If we're not, let's suspend or amend and, and make sure it's something that we're all going to be at least well enough on board with, that, that we're not going to, um, you know, that we're not going to take full advantage of the, of the position. If this is a big-picture person, we can X this out and say, "Do these three things." If this is a micro-managed person, we can X it out and add things. I just implore us to, to, to speak with one voice on that, whatever it is. Any other discussion? Commissioner Dietrich?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I have a proposal. What if we tonight vote on just the first page and this part, which I think, I may be wrong, but I think there's broad agreement on the bullet points there, and relating to this being a project-based work, uh, position, that there'll be monthly reporting, there's regular reporting too, and prioritization for confirmation by the leadership team. I don't know if we have agreement on that. Um, and then daily oversight by and reporting directly the county administrator. It seems to me that the, the problems get, and the disagreement and the questions are related to this very detailed plan, but we could at least get a, a framework and then set and voted on, and then we could do further work on the rest of it, um, maybe in a smaller group, which I think needs to include some people who are not in leadership, frankly. Um, so, you know, and I'm in leadership, so I'm, I'm saying that, um, because I do hear what Commissioner Smith is saying. Um, so I'd like to get your reactions to that idea. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
I think that seems like a good compromise. I think that first page seems to make a lot of sense, and I think what we're not fully agreeing on is the nitty-gritty day-to-day operations, which I think are very important for us to have agreement on, but it seems like we're just not quite there yet. I think passing that first part so we have at least a little bit more clarity would be helpful, um, if folks still have concerns, um, and then come back, work on the, the other part, the day-to-day operations, and come up with something for the January meeting, the second meeting. meeting, the second meeting in January, when hopefully we'd be able to work something out that we all agree on. I'd be interested in Commissioner Smith's response or what your thoughts are on that.
Other discussion? Commissioner Jamnik?
I'm sorry, but I try to take care of our staff. What we're going to pass tonight is the resolution, and I consider the next document a large view of what he's going to be doing. It is not exactly what he's going to be doing, but these are some opportunities he may have to get involved with. But his job is this first paper. Michelle, thank you for reminding us of that, and that's what we're going to pass tonight. This document, Greg, that you have sent to Andy is something of... These are things that may be come up, that may be come up, and we may find out after his first six months, some of these are here, some of them are not, and I don't know that some of them... Personally, I don't think some of them should be his responsibility.
So, whatever the board's... Whatever the will of the board is, that's great, but I would like to respond to Commissioner Jamnik by saying simply this: Today was, I think, a microcosm of what will happen with this position. Frankly, I would guess that he spent 95% of his time today working on the events of this evening, the board agendas, the holiday party, et cetera. However, there were several times today that I came into the office, and he was the only one in the office. And if the phones are ringing, and he's the only one in the office, are you suggesting that he not answer those phones so that he can tend to commissioner business? So, those are the kinds of thing, considerations, that I'm asking the board to make. And if it is your opinion or your will that he not engage in any of those kinds of duties, you need to spell that out for us, and we will make the appropriate adjustments to our operations to accommodate that. I have a strong feeling about phones in the administrator's office that go unanswered.
Ahead, Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Brabec?
So, I'm feeling curmudgeonly tonight. I'm going to apologize for that, since it's our last meeting. Try and, like, embrace some better goodness of spirit. Michelle, thank you. I do think we have broad agreement around the first several bullets in this job description, and it's when the rubber hits the road around how the hours are going to be allocated. Greg, this position was not supposed to be a clerical position, in my opinion. I worked very hard to get it in the budget. I fought against, like, the tides and lost in getting it actually hired. I hear you say that this position spent 95% of his day setting up a party, and I want to be like, "What did we do?" Like, that is not where I want that position's time spent. Like, I really want to see us, like, identifying systemic change priorities that don't belong with the department specifically, but need leadership and support and engagement from this Board of Commissioners, and, like, we're putting someone in that work. Not that any of you would be in that office and not pick up the phone out of, like, simple courtesy to your colleagues, right? That definitely should happen as part of the culture of the administrative office, without a doubt. But I feel like a tremendous loss in this position if we get into this place where, like, this new position that we requested in order to provide leadership on big issues is spending so much time, like... And I know it takes a lot of time. I do. I'm not disrespecting that role, or I probably am disrespecting that role. I apologize for that. Again, feeling curmudgeonly today. I shouldn't disrespect that role, because incredibly important. Like, we don't succeed. We aren't effective without that role, and I really understand that and believe it. I just had some passion for this new job that we were creating and some hope for what it could do around things that we've talked about around this table and not been able to advance. Concerns, for example, we have hundreds of millions of dollars of unfunded liability in our pension fund. We all know that. We're all concerned about it, but we haven't dedicated any staff time and attention to presenting a set of potential solutions to this board to grapple with it. So, it just... It hangs out there. Things like that, that I feel like we should say, "Let's put this on the plate of our policy liaison and put that person to work, making sure that intel is getting coordinated, delivered to us, so that we can advance some things in this community." The equity agenda doesn't... I mean, I'm grateful that OCD has taken leadership there, but it's not an OCD responsibility, right? It is a county-wide obligation in the way I conceive it, and I think you do, too. That's the kind of thing where we should say, "This person's job is to make sure that all of those departments are coordinating that conversation is happening." So, I have high hopes for this position, and they've just been... I've struggled to say that in a very positive way. I apologize for that this evening. I know this is tough, and I want to compliment all of you who have tried to navigate the nine, 10, 11, 15 positions and interests around this. I'm grateful for that, and I know it's hard. I'm going to stick to my vision for that position, which is that it's doing almost exclusively higher-level work. Again, I recognize I may not be in the majority on that, and I'll be accepting and gracious about that if I indeed lose on that.
Other discussion? Commissioner Brabec?
Thank you. Where I am right now is I'm... And frankly, I'm ready to vote on this. I will vote in the affirmative for it. Greg, I'm going to entrust that you hear my concerns and my wishes. I know I'm only one person, but I've also heard other folks say that similar things. And what I would like to see is us, you know, say, "Okay, you know, in a couple of months, let's check in." Maybe it's quarterly, maybe it's in six months, and then take a look at, "Hey, how... What's Desmond's calendar looking like, actually?" And then we can actually have some tangible things to be able to look at rather than just kind of anxieties about concerns that can... That may be unfounded. We just don't know yet. So, that's where I am right now. Thank you.
More than fair. This board has never been shy about expressing their concerns.
Thank you.
I'd just point out, we haven't approved a work plan for this position, and so some of the concerns and some of the aspirations that have been voiced tonight, I think, can rightly be put into that work plan. I don't want to committee that. You know, I don't want to pick three folks, be it in leadership or not. I want that to be a board document that all nine of us feel like we... If we can't agree with it, we at least had input on it. So, I would hope that folks would think about that as we head to January, because that's probably the appropriate time to assign it with a check-in either on a quarterly or twice-yearly Any other discussion at this time?
Commissioner Jefferson, then Commissioner Dietrich?
Thanks, Chair. I have the same thoughts about that position, doing more work that the board has that heavy load. I mean, the two examples that Commissioner Smith gave were two that I was thinking about. I mean, the equity ordinance has been on the table and waiting to come back for us for, I think, since last December of 2016. I'm not sure, but I know it was supposed to be something done in April, and we did see it, but we haven't had much done. So, I think that's a lot of work, those heavy-low projects that we can't tend to ourselves. If one person is focusing on coordinating that with departments, that's one of the things that I believe is the purpose of the board, having some relief and some action taken when we leave this room, because there's a lot of opportunity to get things done much more efficiently by adding this person to the staff. And that staff has... As I said before, staff has... Most of these things that are on the list have already been in their work plan, and that's what I was basically asking. You know, is there some things that are already in their work plan, or are we not looking at what he is actually appointed for, which is to give us some assistance, more so than secretary work?
Commissioner Dietrich?
Thank you, Chair. So, I mentioned earlier that we've authorized hiring only one extra person for administration, but there will be another person coming online soon, right? The budget we approved tonight authorizes hiring a new management analyst. Is that correct? And I'm just wondering if that will help relieve some of the pressure in the office. So, I will leave that to the administrator to answer. Thank you.
So, you have taken that action. We have not gotten to the point where we have talked about programming that individual in, so more to come on that. The only other thing that I would say is that we continue to try to operate this office at a very high level, and we'll continue to do that regardless of how you... What decisions you make relative to this particular position. But we have not gotten to the point where we've talked about that particular position.
Thank you. So, I'm going to offer... Let me back up. I am uncomfortable with voting to approve this with the attached list of responsibilities when we have commissioners who are not comfortable with it. I feel like this has to be something that we have... I mean, nothing's ever going to be perfect. We're not all going to be, you know, completely happy with it, maybe, but I think we need to get closer, I guess, is what I'm saying. And I appreciate that that may put our BOC liaison into a difficult... Slightly difficult position if he doesn't have the detailed list of duties, but I do think that we can approve, as I mentioned before, the first and the second page, just the resolution part, without the attached memo. Our counsel has pointed out that that would require changing the language on the second page a little bit, the "now therefore be it resolved" clause, because it currently references the attached BOC liaison clarification of roles and responsibilities. And I would like to make a motion to change that language, in the interest of furthering this discussion and moving us along. So, I am offering this amendment, or actually, it's a replacement of the current language, "Now therefore be it resolved," that the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners approves of the four work areas listed in this resolution.
Sorry. Having been moved and supported, is there discussion? I have a quick question. You said the four work areas?
Well, we can call them work areas, but you're referring to work plan assignments by BOC resolution, monthly reporting to BOC, regular reporting to and prioritization confirmation by the leadership team, daily oversight and reporting directly to the county administrator. Okay. I'd chime in just to say, that's something we can all agree upon tonight. Fantastic. But I would just caution this one quick thing. Day-to-day oversight and supervision shall be provided by the administrator, including time sheets and so forth. If the day-to-day oversight and supervision is provided by the administrator, I think to some degree we shift the burden from the BOC liaison to the administrator. Now, I know that's heat he can take. That's what he does for a living, but I don't think it will answer some of the questions that will come up on, "What is this person doing in accordance with our collective thinking on what this job should be doing?" So, I don't want to speak against it. I just want to say that publicly, that I think that will come up, and I think we're going to have to work through that together. And I think, frankly, folks, you're going to have to work with whoever's chair and whoever's administrator and grow up and stumble a little bit. So...
Commissioner Jamnik?
I think that's a great solution, and I would support that.
Commissioner Dietrich?
When I offer this, I very much have in mind that we need to work expeditiously to develop that detailed work plan. And I'm not sure exactly how we develop that plan, the process for how we do that, but it does need to happen, I think, sooner rather than later, in fairness to our staff person and to administration, and I'm willing to help with that process.
On that point, I'd just comment, having spent some amount of time on this, if we want to have a day-to-day plan, I'd ask four of us to step up and join a committee to come up with that and bring it back to the whole. So, I don't think that needs to be part of the resolution, does it, Kurt? The daily... We can address that at a future meeting.
I'm very comfortable with that, and I also do appreciate the large amount of work I know that you've put into this already. Thank you.
Other discussion? We're on the amendment. Okay. All those in favor, say aye. And those opposed, say no. Okay. So, it's been amended, and now we're on to the resolution. Any final discussion? Seeing none, we have to do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Labarre?
Yes.
Commissioner Martinez-Crats?
Pass.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Brabec?
Yes.
Commissioner Dietrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Jamnik?
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes.
Commissioner Martinez-Crats?
Yes.
Item passed.
Okay. That's it for the agenda. Move not a 16 report of the county administrator.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to take just a quick moment to thank the employees and the leadership of the organization for what I consider to be another successful year. The service and commitment to our community is second to none. We continue to be a well-run, forward-thinking organization, and I just want to tell you how thankful I am and grateful for all the work that all the employees do. Certainly, the discipline around the budget is critical. I think what you'll find over the next few months is we'll close out 2017 with a modest surplus, and it's not lost on me that we get there through the work of the 1,400 employees of the organization. On a personal note, I want to thank the nine of you for your support and your counsel over this past year, and, more importantly, your patience. We've tackled some very difficult issues this year. We've gotten a lot done. I can take you back to the calendar of deliverables where we... Everything that we've agreed to do, we have done this year. So, in my mind, that points to me to be a very successful year, so I just want to thank all of you, and that will conclude my report.
I just want to respond to that, simply to say, on behalf of the board, thank you to Administrator Dill, to your administrative team, to our corporation counsel, and to every employee from department head to intern for the work you have done and continue to And just echoing that note, thank you to the eight of you for your patience and your work this year, and, to be totally candid, thank you to the voters of Washtenaw County. I haven't said this at this board table, but they gave us a small miracle on November 7th, and the discussions we will fight about over the next year, related to the next four years, are a set of discussions that would not have been possible had they not affirmatively supported the values we put forward in the millage. And so, as I've been one to say, thank God for our voters, thank God for their generosity, and I genuinely appreciate that I get to serve with eight individuals who will keep that in mind as they do their best, and I do my best to make sure we honor the commitments of that millage and the commitments we make in our budget. So, to all our... So, to all around, thank you. Moved items for current or future discussion. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Having been moved and supported, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. And those opposed, say no. We are adjourned.